Sorry. I had to pick this up. Put a scarf on my ear, cuz I washed my hair. Hey, everybody. So I'm at the board meeting for, um, Dalton today. So I'm streaming live for you guys. Hi. Hey, everybody. And I was just went and got some food cuz I just took my pills and I didn't eat. So, um, yeah. I'm going to turn, make sure I got the volume up. See, I never have it all the way up. There we go. High volume. I don't want to eat in y'all face, I'm sorry. Oh my god, Jesus, I'm starving, starving, starving. Did you put all the garlic on there? Ooh, there's no pepper. These are super garlic. Oh my god. Listen, I am starving. And I didn't really eat today. The only thing I ate was grapes and blueberries. I was gonna bring fruit, but I needed food in me. So. Just while eating. I apologize. Hey, how you doing, Ernestine? And Patricia, I gotta clean my glasses, y'all. Yeah, give me a second. I got, I got fingerprint. Hey. I heard you been shut up, I'm sorry. I gotta eat. It's kinda hard running back and forth.
How you doing?
I'm good, how are you?
I'm fine, you staying out of trouble.
Absolutely, out of trouble. Out of trouble. Trouble. It's good. Let me see that, wait, no, bring that back. Mayor-elect, Jason House. Show him his respect. Thank you, thank you, Nikita. Absolutely. Oh, they shit, they testing the mics today. I'm sorry, y'all.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten.
Hey, everybody. No, I don't think she's coming. She's done. There be, there would be no reason for her to come. None at all. Let's just pray she stay where she at. And out of Dalton. Nikita. Stay right there, I'm gonna come to you.
One, two, three. One, two.
Hey, how you doing? I'm sorry, y'all. Thank y'all for joining my live. No, I was on my, uh, screen. I'm sorry, y'all, I almost knocked this over. What just happened? We got top heavy. My bad. Huh? Amazon, try Amazon. They got a whole bunch of, um... Yeah, this one is like a selfie, um, gamble tripod thingy. Yeah, whatever kind of phone you have. Why is this thing falling over, y'all? Hold on. I'm gonna angle up, let me see. This is my chair? I do, but I was, it keep tumbling over. I was just gonna do that. I know, I was gonna set my bag on it, but... Hey, how you doing? Say hey, super producer, everybody. What? Nah, I'm gonna put my bag on it when they get started. Well, in a minute now. I'm good, how you? Listen, I got on cramps. Snow. Oh, I didn't see snow. We don't need snow, please don't snow. We don't want snow. We don't need snow. And my feet was so cold, I forgot I didn't put on my black crocs, my black ones, I blacked. Yeah, cuz I don't, never noticed it, but I was like, oh shit. It's cold out here. Sha girl said hey. No, you did. I just didn't get back up. Cuz my legs ain't, not cooperating today, like this stand. That was funny, right, y'all? My legs is broke like this stand. This is so stupid. I gotta put my book bag up here, y'all. I gotta, uh... I just wanna sit just right here for one second. So I'll be out of my way. Let me see, y'all. Why are you toppling over? So stupid. Okay. There we go. Okay. Don't let it be still.
Test, test, test.
Let me see, other way. Go up a little bit. This stand. Line ain't going up more. That's as up as it go. Why this is seem like that? Wasn't this... So weird. I'm sorry, y'all, I'm playing with this thing, and I don't understand it. Let me see. Did you say eating up the snacks? He probably ain't coming to no more of these meetings, he is embarrassed. I would be embarrassed if I was him. All this stuff you did and said and... And look at you. You still lost by landslide. I love their music. No, I don't think Tiffany's going to show up. But we can take a poll. I don't know how to do the polls yet, hold on, let me see if this is in here. What is this? I'm sorry, y'all. I didn't know, I took the sound off. Thank y'all. I thought I put this thing on Do Not Disturb. This is part I don't get, go back there. Yeah, please don't talk him up. We don't need him showing up at this meeting. It's gonna be productive, anyway. This music is the bomb. I agree. Yeah, Tiffany got all these frivolous lawsuits that she now about to just try and ditch. Yeah, that movie selection is, um, awesome. I need a copy of this. A dub of this CD. They still do that. Y'all don't mind me, I'm just playing with this. My camera looks so clear.
Test one, two, one, two.
I'm gonna go the other way. Hey, how you doing?
One, two, one, two, mic check, one, two, three, one, two, check, check. Mic check, one, two, one, two, three. One, two, check, mic check. One, two, one, two, check, check, mic check. One, two, three.
Oh, why is this thing vibrating?
On to the next one.
They got a plan for Andrew. They been had a plan for him.
Second mic, one, two, check, check, mic check, one, two, three, mic check, one, two, one, two.
Mine? Oh, thank you. It look a mess. I just, yeah. I just washed it. It's... I got, um, it's locked. It's, it's locked, but my hair didn't grow out so much that it, it look like a ponytail, but yeah, I, I normally have locks in it.
So what you gonna lock it?
It's already locked.
I mean, you gonna put, so have it re-twist?
Yeah, I'm gonna get it re-twist soon. I'm just letting it grow out a little bit. Yeah, and it's easy, cuz I don't have to comb my hair. No, I don't, but I, I just had surgery, so... It's, my headaches is so bad that when I comb my hair, it, um, it makes it even worse.
Yeah, I can see that.
So like, if, this is the, like, the best I can do.
Oh, yeah, okay.
For my, for my condition.
My granddaughter ain't nothing wrong with her, but she got locked. So you know how they be looking when it's time to re...
Right.
Man, I don't even comb mine. I said, why you have to work like that?
Right, no, I get you. Nah, it's, it's easy. Listen, it's, it's easier process. And then I really don't have to do much to it.
Yeah, yeah, I could really understand your situation.
Yeah.
I'm a young, uh, granddaughter.
I get it. No, I get it. Hey, how you doing? Hey, how you doing? I'm so tired, y'all.
I guess all the entertainment, all the entertainment folks gonna fall, fall by the wayside now.
Listen, listen, no more, uh, how you doing? So pretty. It's gonna, um, it's gonna be a nice board meeting today. I hope y'all ready for that. Nice board.
One, two, check, mic check, one, two, three, test, test, one, two, check, check. One, two, three, testing, mic number four.
We got our media over there. They switched it up up there a little bit. Hungry. Sorry, y'all. Play a couple more rounds while I turn the camera around. Yeah, Tiffany Henyu still have a sign up there. Y'all see, I'ma zoom in. So we have, um, legal counsel. Have, um... Jason House, mayor-elect. We have clerk Allison Key. Then we have Tiffany Henyu. Then we have... Kiana Belcher. Brittany Norwood. Guessing there's, uh... Tammy Brown. And Stan Brown. They ain't even put one up there, I'm sorry. They ain't even put one up there for Andrew Holmes. Why waste the, uh, ink? Let me zoom out. What we talking about? Hannibal in here, hey, Hannibal. This meeting should be starting soon, you guys. Janine Miller is not coming back at all, and, um... That's the end of her. She's probably snitching. And already done solidified her case. Stan Brown's on board now. I saw him Friday. He's team clean house now. Oh, thank you, Hannibal, I truly appreciate it. You the best. Thank you. Thanks, everybody. I appreciate it. I'm sorry, I wasn't, uh, I was trying to show y'all the other thing, so I missed that. But thank you, New Jersey. Yeah, we definitely gotta watch Stan Brown. He is, um... He has two more years. I don't think he's gonna run again. He should not run again, let's say that. Yes. So we'll, we'll see about that one. I had a conversation with him Friday. I saw him at, um, the St. Patrick's Restaurant. So, if you guys haven't been there, the St. Patrick's Restaurant is very nice. Very well put together, um... Definitely, you can take pictures all over the place, that's how beautiful it is, and it's like a picture heaven, um... Food was excellent. When I say food was excellent, the food was excellent. So, um, just make sure y'all support them. You know, we got finally a nice sit-down restaurant in the community, and the prices are not... I got a copy of the menu. I'mma, uh, post it on my thing when I get a chance, and, uh, so y'all can see it. But, um... But yes, they are... They are, um, definitely open. Nah, Stan shouldn't run again, he should not. I would... I would not. He needs to just, after this, two years is done, just give it up. Now, I wonder how this is gonna go with, um, Andrew Holmes, once we get him out. Who would be appointed as trustee? That would be interesting. Cuz he on his, um... His, uh, second term too. So, yeah. Yeah, it's a lot of regulars that's in, you know, ready. Y'all can see. He needs to be recalled. Who said that? Before his two years. Listen. Stan has, um, a lot on his plate, and remember, he's part of those subpoenas as well. Dan Lee, everybody is saying hi, hello.
Hello, everybody and anybody. How y'all doing?
Everybody and anybody.
How's it going?
But, uh, yeah.
Y'all gonna be the historians, you and Alicia. Y'all got everything, Doc.
Listen, not everything. I started late. Yeah, the good stuff. The stuff that matters, yes. The stuff that matters. Yes. Definitely glad to be here to see any and everything. I'm trying to greet, I'm sorry, I gotta clean my glasses. No, I didn't, uh, yeah, I saw the, um... I saw that podcast, I, well, I listened to it. And, um, that's why I say that, I know they got something in plan for, um, Andrew. I'm not even worried about it. Only thing I'm worried about is, um... Just them getting to work. I even told Jason, I said, listen, I will volunteer. I don't wanna get paid. I'll volunteer to help until they gets, hire enough qualified people for, um, the positions that they need to hire into. They gonna have a lot of work to do, even if it's just filing paperwork, um, sourcing. I, that's one of my strengths. Definitely was good at sourcing, so... Definitely gonna help them. And them. So that things can be better. Hey, love, how you doing? Yeah, so we will see. But, um... Hey, how you doing?
I'm alright.
I'm good, I had everybody.
What's up, everybody? We getting ready, this is pregame.
I know, right. I told him, this about to be a boring meeting. Definitely gonna be a boring meeting. Yes, that's our new mayor. Turn up. We got a new mayor. I'm sorry, y'all. I don't mean to be eating and drinking in y'all face, but... Due to my limited capabilities. Why this thing vibrating? Let me get my, uh, thing together now. So I can get as much as in focus as I can. Let me see. Hold on. This thing is so good. It's so heavy, and I don't understand why. This gonna be ghetto. Alrighty, so... What we had to do was... Should be everybody. Ooh, Keith Freeman in the building. No, I doubt it. I think there's just regular business at hand. Hello from Hawaii. Hey, how you doing? Good. Hey, how you doing? I can't see y'all. Next. The privacy screen is, um... Not my favorite right now. That's a better view. That's a bad idea. I'm sorry, y'all, I'm back. I'm sitting here trying to eat these french fries. Hey, I'm good, how are you? You know, Mike?
You sure?
Uh, I'm good. How you doing? Good to see you.
How you doing, sir? Just seeing you. You got the things quite right?
Alright, good evening, everybody. How are you today?
Good evening.
Alright, we will be waiting 10 minutes. Um, we're still operating under, uh, waiting for Mayor Hinn to see if she'll be present. Uh, if not, we'll begin the meeting with Mayor O'Toole. So 10 minutes, we'll start at 6:40.
Stan Brown in the building. Hey, how you doing? Uh, my uncle. Oh, yeah. He just passed Christmas, y'all.
Yeah.
I am, I'm sorry. My momma's done with this. I'm sorry, y'all, I was hungry. I wanted to get it out the way before the meeting started. I can't eat during the meeting, 'cause I gotta be quiet. That was me. Alright. Fix this back up. There we go. Mr. Acting Fire Chief. Hey, Mary.
Hey, Mary. Hey, Mary, sweetie. I'm good. I'm tired, but I'm good.
Hey. I'm not doing the bad crackling no more. I put it up. They moved Tiffany Hallyday to the end.
Hello, my friends. How y'all doing?
Hey.
Hey, how you doing? How you doing?
I thought you were a lady.
I am.
So I say, hey, say, everybody.
Hey, everybody.
They can't see you.
They can't see me. I can't see them either. I need some eyes on.
I think that's five minutes ago.
Hey, everybody.
Y'all see trustees up?
Yes, 'cause I can.
Okay, let me turn it back around. Hold on.
Did Tiffany call?
Mm-hmm, I guess. Uh-huh. Bet you my mouth smell like straight garbage. Letting you gotta kiss nobody. Sorry. I was like, with two pages, probably, but it was like a third page or something else on it.
Can I have one too, if you have an extra one here?
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a decent turnout. Um, let me turn, I can turn the camera around. Let me move it, pan it over, other way. Yeah, it's a decent turnout. Alright, let me flip it back. A little bit in reverse. I think we'll be able to get everybody in frame. Y'all can see Stan Brown. Look at that. I appreciate everybody that's on my live. I thank y'all so much for joining in. I appreciate y'all giving me the opportunity to spread the news. I am going to be quiet now. Hey, cooking with Frank. Thank you. What they talking about? She got a seat, they put it next to the, um, attorney. And thank everybody for joining my live. I appreciate y'all.
Alright, good evening, everybody. Time is 6:40, so we will call this meeting to order. So we'll start off with asking clerk Keaton to do a roll call.
Thank you, everyone, good evening. Tammy Brown, present. Trustee Nor, I'm sorry, trustee Tammy Brown. Trustee Norwood, present. Trustee Stan Brown.
Present.
Trustee Belcher, here. Trustee House.
Present.
And trustee Holmes is absent. And Derek Minier is absent. We have a call.
Thank you. Next, I'll ask everybody to stand for the pledge of allegiance.
The United States of America, sincerely, prophet, from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you remain standing, I'll ask Pastor Flesch, if you believe in prayer, please.
Uh, I would like to, uh, if it's okay, same, same as prayer. Uh, but I would like to actually just read a few verses from the Word of God, first Corinthians, the 13th chapter. It says, "If I speak with the tongues of men and of angels, but I have not love for others throwing out of God's love for me, then I have become only a noisy gong or a clinging cymbal, just an annoying distraction. And if I have the gift of prophecy, and I speak a new message from God to the people, and understand all mysteries, and possess all knowledge, and I, and if I have all sufficient faith, so that I can remove mountains, but do not have love reaching out to others, I am nothing. If I give all my possessions to feed the poor, and if I surrender my body to be burned, but do not have love, it doesn't, it doesn't mean no good at all. Love endures with patience and serenity. Love is kind and thoughtful. It is not jealous or envious. Love does not brag, and is not proud or arrogant. It is not rude, it is not self-seeking, it is not provoked, not overly sensitive and easily angered. It does not take into account a wrong endured. It does not rejoice at injustice, but rejoices with the truth. Love prevails."
Amen.
Thank you very much, everybody, see you. First item on the agenda is public comments. So we'll ask anybody who has comments for this body, please, come to the podium. We have a three-minute, uh, timer, and then I'll, uh, notify you if the time exceeds.
Good evening. First of all, I want to say congratulations, new mayor of the board. I passed out a document, and anyone that did not get it, that would like it afterwards, just so we have an idea where I'm coming from. I had a conversation with Mayor Edlect House, and told him I would be doing this tonight. And I'll read it to you, there are two of us, though. Mayor House Board and my dog and neighbors, not just my immediate neighbors, but my village. Some of you may not understand my concerns, and probably not even care, but my neighbors and I still have concerns with the establishment at the entrance of our residential area, St. Patrick's State House. We know we all like glitz and glamour, and I'm not against that. We are not against economic development regardless. We need it, and we need it bad. The initial issue with the building was the fact that the residents, because of the distance to the residential homes and the busy corner, were not engaged. Because some things that have happened in the area prior, we are concerned. I and others, my neighbor and some other neighbors who haven't made it here yet, had those conversations with the owners, and even invited them to come out and talk with us at the tea, sort of a town hall. They said yes, then they said no, as they felt it would ruffle the mayor's feathers. Never mind our feathers. As existing business persons within the village, we knew the mayor was bypassing steps for them to keep their existing liquor license while denying others their license. The building is here, so we must deal with it. The dog and pony show we received on the Saturday of the tea was just that, a dog and pony show. They started their presentation out with, "We can't really answer anything because of litigations," so the questions were not answered. Some were, and some weren't. I have spoken to the original engineer, from whom the issues regarding the building came from, and I have spoken to the second engineer, from his last correspondence of July 2024, indicating it was not done. He verbally stated he was not provided the documentation he needed to complete the task. Safety of the structure inside and out is most definitely paramount. But my concern goes further.
We reached three minutes, we need to share any three?
Yes.
Gotcha.
I had an opportunity to speak with one of the owners regarding the trash. That's my major concern, the trash. I made a joke of it. I do not want rats and raccoons coming in my house with a suitcase. That's simple. We're concerned about our neighborhood. And if they're not, then I do expect this board, along with this community, to make sure they hold up their end of the bargain. I have, um, I won't read it all, you got it, but I have reports. I have inspections. I have inspections that are lies. I have an inspection that says that the containers were there January 30th. The first opening wasn't until February. The containers were placed there this past Friday. So I'm trying to figure out how an inspector can sign off on this document and how we accept it. I do not have inspections from the original complaint that the trustees brought to us. They say it's done, but where do we see that it's done? It's that simple. I thought it was my duty, and if we're going to be open, honest, and transparent as we say we are, not just the trustees, but us as citizens. And because their end doesn't mean we turn our backs on them, it means we have to continue to help them be accountable. This is my home. I live at 15101 Blackstone. Any blind I look in my house, that's what I see. Less than 500 feet from my house. And if I don't ask for right, who will? Thank you.
You got one minute left, but I have two, two comments. Uh, first, oh, yeah, I got, I got called. Yeah, one, one minute, two seconds, but I do, uh, first, I want to acknowledge and congratulate, uh, newly elected trustee Mary Avon to the Thornton Township Board. So the comments have been, uh, shared and of course we have many to dial on there. So we have, as a board member, we have a couple of different concerns and ongoing that we'll be, that we will make sure we continue to monitor. First and foremost, we want to make sure that the village has done all proper steps needed in the, in the, in the process of this building opening. We have our attorneys that will be reviewing everything and have been in ongoing review to make sure all inspections have been done, all things have been passed. Structure leads to, because the last thing the village wants, of course, is a disaster and we definitely do not want any additional litigation. Uh, so that's step one. Part two on there is, uh, we care greatly and tremendously. So when we're talking about the debris and everything that's over there, not only for this business, but all businesses, we want to make sure they are aware of code enforcement. And I will be riding around, the trustees will be riding around, and we will, we will be talking to all business owners. So in the coming days and months, there will be warnings issued and if those warnings are not heeded, tickets will be followed and every step of enforcement, we will, we will clean up this community. So I want to make sure that is understood too.
Thank you. Once again, congratulations, Brown's Law, to Anne, to Mary. The owners now own the soccer dome. And previously, behind, attached to the soccer dome, going, uh, at the backyard of one hundred and first, fifty first street, there's a privacy with a, it's painted red and colored and it has warning signs posted on it. I made some pictures, but I, I mean, it's my phone. But anyway, that fence, yes, it's in bad shape, but it's still, it's up there. When you get to Blackstone, one hundred and fifty from Blackstone, that fence continued and it flooded to the back end of the Veterans Hospital that is where St. Patrick is at. On that side, that privacy for Blackstone is gone. That was one additional layer of safety that we could feel. We didn't have to worry or concern about you get out of the bowling alley, you end up hanging out, you just run on through people's backyards. If they could put that fence, the extension of that fence, just you come back in and take a look at it and see it's gone on the Blackstone side. And that would give some kind of protection for their lady that lives at one hundred and fifty up in twenty, one fifty twenty-six South Blackstone or one hundred and thirty. Okay? I don't know about the pod halls, but they are huge. Hundred and fifty first and Blackstone and down the street from Deepland Elementary School.
So sorry.
The whole one hundred and fifty first and Blackstone, my Patrick, uh, my, my neighbor Patrick couldn't be there. But he had to get towed out and he has a pickup truck. He had to get a tow them in order to get his vehicle out of that home. That was recently, two days ago.
Thank you very much.
Sorry, sorry, sorry.
Greetings, everyone. First of all, I'd like to congratulate everyone that won in their respective races and both here and Thornton Township. I'm feeling more optimistic than I have about the Village of Dalton and I've been here since nineteen eighty-nine. I feel more optimistic now than I ever have because I see we have good people in place. I also noted on the agenda, there's a list of businesses that have been denied permits and licenses and so forth. Like I said on the agenda, I'm picking from the first page there. And you definitely need to concentrate on getting those open and, you know, danger clients with all the rules, obviously. But we do have a long line of businesses that have been done wrong over the last four years. And that is stifling the growth of this city and this entire community. This is not just one place. There's a list of places. And this is going on far too normal. So priorities being what they are, I'm glad to see that's on today's agenda. Secondly, uh, there's a big elephant in the room we need to address. It has to do with our educational system. Uh, I think eventually we're gonna have to team up with Thornton Township officials to get a some, some sort of resolution to the school board problem we have. What we have right now is people getting paid at a premium rate, but we're getting dollar store results in our grades.
Say that.
Okay.
Thank you.
That cannot continue. So we're gonna have to band together, uh, come up with some kind of tutoring program or something. And hopefully we can communicate well with the new school board members, but we also have to step forward. Now, as you can see, I'm way too old to have children in school, but a lot of people that have, uh, uh, children in school need to join this effort because it can't be just the elected officials. Everything that has been done for the last few years has been a joint effort by both the community and the elected officials that stood up to the tyranny that we were, that we were living under. So that's a true point approach. Uh, hopefully, uh, with partnership between government, Thornton Township and looking at the problem holistically, we can get our school system back together and we can also come up with some kind of reasonable pay scale for the government, uh, student people. We know who they are. We've seen it. And just, how do you get voted, another twenty thousand more out there for eighty? And then you got the worst results in almost the whole darn county, city, the whole state. I mean, that doesn't make sense to me. So we need to do something about that. And then just one more thing, we gotta get our voter turnout book, turnout book.
Absolutely.
All the work that everybody did in the last two elections, not cold and rain, but not. The best we can do is twenty-six percent in the February twenty-first primary and that was, in this area, that was the number one, I believe, in the biggest turnout. That was the biggest turnout there was. So we need to get out, get out, get our neighbors, get them out here and hopefully we can continue to grow. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Good evening, everyone. First of all, I want to get honored to God. I want to give him all the honor and all the glory for this great turnout for our newly elected officials. I congratulate you. I am so happy and excited to see you all continuing in your role as mayor, trustees and madam clerk and our new attorney. I give you all the respect in the world and, uh, I just feel overwhelmed that we all did this and it wasn't just them.
Hello.
It was usually residents that came out and showed out. And from our new elected official, uh, Mary, along with myself, I promised to do the best job that I could possibly do for Thornton Township so both the township and the city can get out of the red and be productive.
Amen.
But came out and showed out. And Mr. Lee is absolutely correct. Any event, we do not show up. Springfield is not gonna listen to us. They gonna listen at another municipality that came out and produced more votes than we did. We have to come out and exercise our rights to vote. I was at St. Patrick's this past Friday. The place is drop dead gorgeous. The event, the food was fantastic and I'm sure, and I would go over there myself and look at the fence and, uh, speak with the owners, the city, can we, uh, correct that problem? I've even suggested, uh, and I don't know how that might work out, that even the residents on their block, just like they do in the city, get, uh, what do I get, signs.
Permit parking.
Resident houses to say, no parking, if it's conducive to the village. And I'm sure we can rectify this because that's a beautiful establishment and I hope to see more businesses come to Dalton because we can definitely use the tax revenue. So I would go over there myself, look around, have those hard conversations and hopefully we can correct that so everybody can be happy. Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to give applause and give acknowledgements to our newly elected as well, Thornton Township trustees, all the officials.
Good evening, everyone. Um, woo, I'm stuck in my cane. Pick it up. So just wanted to say hey, everybody. Again, I want to congratulate Clean House twenty twenty-five for the wonderful job that you guys have been doing, the work that you have put in and the work that you're gonna continuously do. So just know that we gonna stay on you guys like we gonna stay on here. And we just want to make sure that you guys know what the, what the plan is, that you just do what you have to do to get our village back up and working and running. Um, as far as the St. Patrick's restaurant, I went there Friday as well. Um, very nice establishment. Um, I haven't been out in a long time because of a lot of things that I've been going through. So leaving out this Friday was actually like, uh, breath of fresh air. Beautiful scenery, beautiful environment. Met up with one of the residents. I know she's watching my live, hey. Um, but it was nice. It was something that we needed for this community. And I think that, um, their vision that they had, it was truly put for and the, the work that you see and the establishment that was built. I know that it was ugly when they started, but we, it's here, so we have to give them an opportunity to be able to be successful and to thrive in our community because we need this. It is a, a truly a nice restaurant and it's, and the prices are not even that expensive either. That's what blew me away because it was affordable. And that's something that, you know, when we have people that do come to our community, they can eat something that's affordable, that's like tending part of all the prices. And, um, they get a really nice picturesque, is that a word? I don't know.
Yeah.
But they give a lot of picturesque vibe. So I just think that, um, we definitely can work with them, continue to work with them, everybody. If you do let them, no, and don't, please stop. So you guys have a great day and Clean House twenty twenty-five. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. And I just want to say congratulations to Mayor House and my trustees. You guys did a great job and I especially want to thank the residents of Dalton that showed out because I happen to work, work the calls. But I don't know if I'm the only one in the room. I've been asleep since the election been over. I can't get out of bed. I have to get out of bed for this meeting, but I'm so ready and I'm just so grateful to Jason Mayor House. Now, you know, I've been calling you that for two days. I've been speaking that early. But I'm so glad that, uh, Mayor House and the trustees thought of, uh, a team with the trustee where they're gonna have a therapist to come in because the people that have fought in this fight for so long, it was very emotional. It was a time that I had a meltdown with Jason and I was like, oh my God, I just, you know, I mean, I had a meltdown and we all know Jason be like this. I'm like this. So I think it's important that we try to heal and not take old baggage into our new journey. So I, I, I feel that in my heart. We have to heal and let things go. It is what it is. Hey, we won, so we gotta get our village back together and we're gonna be okay.
Absolutely.
We are gonna be okay. We got this, Ali. Mayor House, with the trustees, we got the masks. So that's all I want to say. I had to, I'm babysitting. My, my granddaughter's out of town, but I could not miss this meeting, so I had to bring my buddy with me. So y'all have a good evening.
Alright, thank you.
Hey, good evening, everyone. Um, I felt compelled to come up here because I was not at the victory party and I have to congratulate every single person on this slate in addition to trustee Avat. And I would say, that's gonna be so weird. We call her Miss Mary or Mama Mary. No, I have to call her trustee Avat. So congratulations, uh, Ms. Avat, Valerie Stubbs, congratulations. I'm so excited for the township, for the Village of Dalton. And I also want to say, you know, there's a lot of people that's been in this fight, but first, I'm sorry, let me also thank the pioneers in this fight. Dan Lee, Camille, Belma Price, Valerie Stubbs, Miss Mary, I forget your name, is it Adam? Okay, and I mean, just everyone that was, you know, in it from the beginning, Karen, um, JB, you know, the juice was worth the squeeze. I mean, because here we are today, they've endured so much, but to persevere. Trustee Steve, I'm so excited. He had this smile that was so bright. I'm like, you know, but I was just so excited. His smile just made everything worth it. So, but I also want to say, you know, make sure you guys are patient with this administration. There's a lot of people saying, oh, you know, they need to do this and they need to do that. They know what they need to do. That's why I'm voting for this position. They know what they need to do. Give them a chance to do it without, you know, people trying to direct them. You don't know what things have to be done before other things can be done. So give them a chance to just lead and do what, you know, you guys elected them to do. So it's a new day, uh, and I'm excited for everyone. Have a good evening.
Alright, good evening, Dalton. My name is Sherwood T. Thompson. I'm a resident member of Green Park and representing the Thompson family, which has lived off the one hundred and forty-four block of, pretty much, it was multiple blocks, so Simley, Kim Mark and everything like that. They've been in this town since nineteen ninety-one. So first of all, to everyone who's here, let's give a round of applause to the trustees. The next thing I want to make it clear was, of course, we know Ms. Haney's not here. There's a reason to that. But main thing I want you guys to pay attention on and focus here on now is, when you're basically, when you're doing something, if you're in a fight, stick it to the end. Because now you got a whole administration, I know they're doing, they got experience. And also, let's think, but I had to give you guys round of applause because y'all fight this fight. You've seen everything, Thornton Township, the Village of Dalton.
Come on now.
The Village of Dalton is gonna have a brand new day. Today is a brand new day.
Yeah.
You've got a whole administration that's gonna bring brand new businesses to this town, so let's make it real. Our intentions are in good hands too. Mary Avon, Ms. Stubbs, is everyone is here, so you got everything you need to know. As far as I see it, well, basically we had a talk earlier for the first time. Uh, you know, the village member Green Park, that's my great, I'm raised up in Elsford and, we stay with you guys because we look at it as you guys need support, so we're gonna show you guys that same type of support. Same amount of love that you gave everyone else, we'll give it to you guys. That's the reason. Thank you guys for your song.
Thank you.
I, I wanted to take a moment to, of course, say congratulations, uh, to the mayor, to the clerk, to all of the trustees. Uh, congratulations to, uh, Sister Mary Avon, Sister Valerie Stubbs, where is she? Congratulations. And, and look, since you can still put that mama trustee on there, you don't have to just call her. We used to call her mama, you know.
Mama trustee.
That's all you gotta do. Um, my name is Pastor Fleschman. I pastor a church here in the Village of Dalton at one forty-five forty Lincoln Avenue. Uh, I actually went to the military from one fifty one thirty-nine Chicago Road in nineteen nine, well, nineteen eighty-six. That was my address in nineteen eighty-six. Uh, and my, my, my parents had the house and then my sister had a home and then I think about five years ago, uh, they, they recently sold the home. Uh, so, so Dalton, I feel like I'm Dalton bred. Church has been here for sixteen years now. Uh, Brother Lee, I wanted to let you know that we are already working on a tutoring program with District two oh five. Okay, we, I'm already talking with the superintendent, the assistant superintendent. I'm already in contact with some staff members. We are asking for volunteers, though. We are asking for all educators, I mean, even if you're not an educator, uh, but you want to come in and you want to help out students. Uh, we're asking for all volunteers. Um, I'm, I'm sure you can grab my number from one of the trustees or, or see like, that's D U trustee Stanley Brown at the end. Uh, see him at the end, but Brother Lee, we are already working on that, but we do need the support, okay? Uh, the other thing I wanted to mention is that, uh, uh, Mary, I promise you that I will stand. that I will stand with you and hold them accountable. I will not allow them to come and trash up this community. And I believe that St. Patrick's heart is right. I believe that their mindset is correct. I believe it's what we need. And so, let's stand together. You can call me, just don't call me the two or three, I don't get paid, you know. In the morning, I mean, I thought something was going on, I don't get paid. Prayer, fine, but. And then the last thing is this.
If I see one of the rats coming with a suitcase, I'm going to call you.
I already got you, got you. I just saw this on TV, they got this new bird control out for the bats. They're soon, maybe they'll bring that and that'll work. But the last thing, asking, I won't take all the time. Mental health is real.
Yeah.
And we've been in the battle for a long time. Clean house has come.
Come on.
But now, clean house must either end.
Come on now.
Because clean house is still a clique. Clean house is still a group of people that came together. And so, now, we must become one dog.
Yeah.
With that love that I read about in the beginning with that scripture, that's it. Three minutes, babe. I never going to stop you, but I don't want to pass up this on the road.
That's why I said at the beginning, you told me, come up and pray that way.
Fleschman, we doggy lining now.
Doggy, there we go, doggy, you know.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Angela Russell. I'm a newer resident to Dalton. I purchased a home here in December 2021. You all's motivation is crazy. I did not know everything that was going on until the last couple of years. And I've learned a lot thanks to all the information you guys have provided. Both good and not so good. I've had the opportunity to speak with a few of you already about being happy that there's a mental health initiative. I work with a mental health program in Vision Unlimited. And I actually are already, hey, met with some of your faith leaders are already to provide digital supports for communities in Thornton Township and other communities in surrounding areas. So, I'm hoping that we'll be able to be a part of, me personally, more a part of all the great things happening in Dalton and Thornton Township as well as professionally to offer mental health supports. So, I'll be in contact with everyone. I've already talked to Ms. Park. So, we will be in contact. We're already working with some of their faith leaders to make sure that we can provide the actual additional mental health support that we all need, not just because of what we've been going through as a village, be it not personal or not. So, congratulations to all of you. My first, first, first in-person meeting, but I have been very supportive behind the scenes. And I'm happy that the tone of these meetings has significantly changed with the leadership that we have. And I'm looking forward to what we have to do together as a community.
I want to say thanks to everybody for the comments. That will conclude Citizen's Address. And next, we will go right into the general announcement. So, I'll ask any board member if they have comments at this time.
May I be recognized?
Absolutely, Trustee Beltrick.
I got a lot. Thank y'all. First off, I would like to say, thank you, Village of Dalton, for re-electing me. I am grateful for all of the support. I am so glad that our community has come together. Dalton United, that's our new movement.
Absolutely, love it, love it.
That's our new movement. I was a team to be the representative and I'm happy in making sure that I'm held accountable for everything. So, please keep me to that word. We have special edition, Tea with the Trustees, April 12th. Changing the narrative in Dalton. Healing together, mental wellness and resilience after a community trauma. Lysandra Wilkins will be the guest speaker. It will be April 12th from 9:00 a.m. to 11:30 a.m. Right here in the Leicester Long Fieldhouse. So, Tea with the Trustee will be a special edition because through these three and a half years, we have all been through some trauma. This has been very traumatic to our community. And so, we want to start the healing process. Also, on April 29th, uh-uh, I'm sorry, April 26th, we have Recycle Day. Recycle Day will be at 14122 Martin King Drive from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00. If you have anything that needs to be recycled, it's not a shredding that is recycled because people are not about shredding. It's recycling, small electronics, things that may just styrofoam, uh, styrofoam, large, small furniture, it's on the list. I have a player, but it's a recycling event. 9:00 a.m. to 12:00. Then we have Prayer for Dalton, April 23rd. So, we will continue prayer for Dalton. We do it quarterly. We last met at Pastor Fleschman Church in the Bundit Living Christian Church. This time, we will be at New Life Celebration. I'm trying to find the player, y'all, because they got me between 1,000 players. Okay, New Life Celebration, Wednesday, April 23rd, 6:30 p.m. With Reverend Kimberly Short and Reverend Talvin Short will be hosting the Dalton, uh, Dalton Prayer. And then we also have other pastors from in the community that will be there. So, every quarter, we will continue to do Dalton Prayer. This is just for us to come together. We just can't stop right now. We're doing it before, we got to keep it consistent because we need prayer in the community. That strengthens us. So, we need to continue to be on one accord. The last thing I have is Community Game Night. Trustee Norwood invaded my space. But we will have Beelis and Spades. Y'all didn't even want it, but no. Beelis and Spades Community Game Night will be April 25th. It will start at 6:00 p.m. at 14200 Martin King Drive. A lot of people have been coming out. It's just a good time, good time for the community is free. We have life refreshment, but it's just for us as a community to keep getting together. So, those are the announcements I have for today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Beltrick. Congratulations again. Anybody else? Comments? That Trustee Norwood?
Hello. Hello, everyone. Happy Monday. I would like to thank, just thank everyone. We couldn't say it enough. I say it all the time, if you want to go fast, go alone. But if you want to go too far, go as a team. And that's what we have with Dalton United. So, this is super exciting for us. I'm just so excited today because I was able to go into Village Hall and actually meet with some residents today. And they have a nice office set up. So, guys, come in and kind of visit us. It was really uplifting, I would say that. So, that's exciting. I do have several announcements. One is our Taxes and Insurance seminar. So, typically, every year, I bring our Thornton Township Tax Exessor, Cassandra Esten, to come out. And she makes it easier for residents to come to one location and just make sure that your tax exemptions are in place. A lot of times, residents don't know that just because you have a tax exemption this year doesn't mean that you'll have it next year. Doesn't mean that it hasn't fallen out. So, sometimes what happens is the exemption will fall off and residents are wondering why their taxes increased. So, it's extremely important that you keep your exemptions in place for seniors. We want to make sure that you are receiving your senior tax freezes or your senior tax exemptions. So, come out, guys, and make sure that your tax exemptions are in place. And that'll be April 9th, Wednesday, April 9th, from 6:00 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. And it'll be at our Clean House Headquarters. So, right there, 14200 Martin King Drive. Come in and just make sure, that way you don't have to go to the township to catch it. You can catch it right here in Dalton. Then for our Dalton Park District, our favorite park district, we have the Exciting Spring Eggtime. It's April 12th from 12:00 to 1:00 p.m. Participants will be divided into age groups, kindergarten through eighth. And they'll hunt for egg, golden egg prizes. It is a free community event, guys. And if you all have any questions, feel free to call Dalton Park at 708-841-2111. We also, they'll also have the Join the Fun. So, if you have any children at home, you can register them for flag football. You can go to www.daltonparkdistrict.org or you can contact Dalton. And registration is from March the 17th through April 6th, guys. So, make sure you give them a call. And last but not least, I'd like to thank our favorite high school, Thorn Ridge High School, for allowing me to host our very first job there for Thorn Ridge students this Wednesday. So, it's extremely important, some of the youth are graduating, they'll have their decision date soon. And it's important that they have jobs for the summer because we would like to keep them busy. That's the goal. So, I thank them, I thank all the vendors that'll come out and have live interviews so that the youth can apply on the spot. And we have career opportunities available. So, we do have our local, our local solar works located in Dalton. And they have electrician apprenticeship that we'd like the community to know about just for those who, we know that colleges are for everyone, but we like to let the students know that there are options. So, our youth empowerment program is still hanging in there and it's going to be better. If you are an employer and you are hiring, please feel free to contact me. My number, 708-968-4297. We could never have enough jobs for the children, guys. And then, last but not least, the Chicago Sky Gang has resumed. Every year, I have Sky Gang tickets. So, you all can feel free to send me an email to see, you know, for, to register for tickets. We all know that a family that goes and enjoys a basketball game together stays together. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you very much, Trustee Norwood.
Mayor Pro Tim, may I be recognized?
Absolutely, Trustee Tamara Brown.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I also want to say congratulations to our Clean House, Clean House team. Love working with these guys, I couldn't see it any other way. So, I want to say congratulations to them again. Also, my announcement for this evening is scouting for food. 2025 Scouting for Food, helping communities in Illinois and Indiana. Every spring, the scouting community from Pathways to Adventure Council mobilizes across Chicago land and Northwest Indiana, together food for their neighbors in need. Last year, we collected over 15,000 pounds of food. This year, scouts will canvass their neighborhoods to distribute information of door hangers on April the 26th. They will return to the following weekend to collect donations of non-perishable, non-expired items to support local food pantry. We have a body scouts unit right here in the Village of Dalton. And they're out of New Life Celebration Church, right here, 142nd and Dante. We will also have a drop box in Village Hall if you have, want to donate any non-perishable items. They're going to distribute this food right here in the Village of Dalton. So, we have a lot of people that are in need and these young men want to do something here in the Village of Dalton. So, I hope that we can get everyone's support to drop off some non-perishable items in the Village of Dalton. I definitely will have a box posted there and we will look for everyone in this room to help us out. Thank you so much. It's going to be in Village Hall. I'm going to have a drop box there. And then they're going to collect it and then they're going to distribute it. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Trustee Tammy. Trustee Stan Brown?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's more than honor to sit in front of you again. So many things is going on, you know. Sitting up here next to Happy Monday, should keep a lot of fire going. So, it's going to be a lot of fun going through this here board again. Brother Eske, we're going to be sitting together, young man, you know, we got a lot to do. I'd just like to say, most churches, their doors open on Sundays and maybe a Wednesday. But Pastor Fleschman and myself, we've been talking about this for about the past six years. We want to open up a Bonner Derry Christmas Center church anywhere from five to seven days a week because there's so many different programs that we're looking to implement. With Commissioner Harris back there and a lot of other commissioners and the superintendent, Courtney White, they're looking to do adult and youth softball out in the main park here. So, that's upcoming. And we're going to have at the Bonner Derry Christmas Center, we're working on it right now. We're trying to get some things together. We will have master floors, master electricians, and master carpentry will be coming, working out of the Bonner Derry Christmas Center church. So, we want to have our church doors open. We're going to work with anywhere from youth to seniors that want to pick up any type of trade. And also, we will be having Mr. Calvin Jerry, a master tailor. He will be coming out working on the clothing department. So, all those things are forthcoming. And it's a good feeling to know that we got a good government agreement with the park district and the village and the churches is coming on board. So, we have a whole lot of things that's coming on, Dalton residents. I hope everyone put your seatbelt on because Dan Lee says it's like a breath of fresh air. Appreciate you, Dan Lee, for them kind of words. And that's definitely what we do, Lee. And I did hear something about we need mental health here, somebody to come. We've been through some drought. So, things are looking good, shaking good, going in a good direction. And also, Trustee Tam, you didn't speak on solar electric?
No, I'm sorry, we can't.
No, that's your baby. I'm working with you on that. So, it's so many things going on and so many things we're trying to remember, we're trying to do. So, I don't know if there's enough days in a week for us to get all these things done. But it's just so much that we would like to give to our residents of the Village of Dalton. So, thank you for showing up and, what's that, showing out? So, whatever that is, I appreciate you, ladies and gentlemen, for coming out. And I ask again, give this board a chance to do these things that we're going to do. Of course, definitely, we got a couple more to do. So, if, Tammy, if you can speak on that solar electric, that's a hot ticket. I hate to have to get away.
Well, I have two things. First, I want to say condolences to the Deputy Chief, the Fire Chief of County Man City, who had passed away and his services were this fast. We can correct that. So, I want to give our condolences to the Deputy Chief of County Man City. Also, as Trustee Stan Brown spoke about, we have the Millennium Solar Electric Academy, which will also be at the Job Fair. As Trustee Norwood stated, a lot of kids are not college bound, not college material. So, we want to be able to offer them something else besides going to college. The Millennium Solar Electric Academy is at the Old Standard Bank. It's an apprenticeship program and it actually starts out, it's a four-year program. It starts out with making $21 an hour. Once they're done with their four years of training, they make $99 an hour. And we have, we are currently working, I work that part-time. So, we are currently working on a project. We are in the process of assisting building a solar farm at Alabari College. So, I think it's a great league and it's just not for our young adults. It's for older ones too. And we also have young women that also participate in that program. It's a great program, solar electrician. And it's a lot of things that are going to be generated by solar. So, we want clean green. If you want to bring that here to Dalton, clean green. So, stop by and visit. I'm normally there Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday at 10:00 a.m. So, you definitely can stop by for a tour of the Solar Electric Academy. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so, just, yes, sir. Just one thing there on there. Ladies and gentlemen, we're right now in a situation, we have individual liquid officials on just about everything that's going on throughout the township. So, I say residents, don't hesitate and touch your bases. So, we got trustees from the Village of Dalton. We got park commissioner, I can see back there in San Joelle, Commissioner Dalton Park. We got school board members 205, 148, 149, Ms. Moody's back there. Just been back real late for the school board district 205. Congratulations, Ms. Moody. So, we have a lot of connections going on, ladies and gentlemen. So, we supposed to get a lot of stuff after this in the Village of Dalton. Don't wait for you to come to church with Stan on Friday. Thank you, I'm sorry.
That's all good. Thanks, Trustee Stan. Couple of quick notes as well for myself. I want to thank Dalton Park District as always for the use of this space and the partnership that they've been giving to us over the past years. I see President Commissioner Willis Harris and Commissioner Sandra Wells. I want to say thank you very much for your ongoing partnership. So I want to say thank you very much for your ongoing partnership. Uh, we also want to mention that we're pleased to announce it, it's been open for a little bit, but we have, the, the doors to Village of Dalton have officially been opened for individual residents. I also want to make sure that I acknowledge, because we've talked about the fight and the trauma that's gone on over the last few years, but we don't give enough credit to the hardworking employees who are here in this room that have endured, uh, the same level of confusion and dysfunction. So I want to take a moment and ask everybody to give a round of applause to the employees of the Village of Dalton. Um, another congratulations that I have to give is to my brother that did not have a moment to speak his piece yet and didn't come up to the podium. End word, speed for his. I really want to thank everybody in the community for coming up and showing out in the numbers that they did and just for casting a vote. Our numbers in the primary were significantly higher than the last time. Our numbers in the general were slightly up, but we always want to encourage that vote. That means so much that everybody's voice is heard. And I mean, everybody, whether they voted for, uh, myself, for members of the Clean House ticket or any opponent, we want, we really need those voices to be heard. Those who are with us, we appreciate that support. Those who are, who are not with, uh, we appreciate the, um, encouragement that there's, there's still another level that we need to go to and we're gonna keep working until we get there. I think that now it's time that we, of course, come together. Elections, this last few years have brought out the worst and, and many people. Uh, and how could it not? I appreciate that the community has come together, we stood up to one another. And now, if, now we want to make sure that we acknowledge, no matter whom anybody voted for, whether it is the Clean House team or another, we are now just here to serve every resident in the days of retaliation for lack.
Thank you.
I think Pastor Fleischman kind of stole the thunder, the thunder a little bit. As we talked about, Clean House has been more than just, uh, myself and clerk and the board of trustees. Clean House has become this community and through the coming days and weeks, you will begin to see that we are, we will be transitioning that name to one new name and hashtag that will be coming out as Dalton United that represents the family that we've become. So be on the lookout for more things that will be coming in the, under the Dalton United branding. Uh, so having said that, I don't try to be long-winded, I feel like I don't have a lot to say, we just got a lot to do. So I'm gonna go on to the next on our agenda, which is the village clerk's report.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. How's it, you guys hear me?
Yes.
I just want to make sure, uh, because sometimes attention pushes the mic away from me, so I just wanted to make sure. Um, again, I want to thank everyone for supporting me for another term as clerk with the Village of Dalton. I look forward to working with you guys closer, things that I was not able to do last term. I've already started working on them now and I look forward to getting some things done that have been kind of a setback for the past four years. Um, moving forward, one of the things is being able to prepare this agenda for this meeting that I have not always been able to do it, which is hard for my young ass clerk to prepare the agenda and a few other things, but it's all good now, so I don't have to go into details. But, um, I just want to ask the board of trustees to approve the minutes for the March third, twenty twenty-five, uh, regular board meeting.
Is there a motion to approve the meeting minutes as read?
Motion.
Is there a second? Hearing the motion, Trustee Norwood, second by Trustee Stan Brown, any discussion? If there's no discussion, please call the roll.
Trustee Tammy Brown?
Aye.
Trustee Norwood?
Aye.
Trustee Stan Brown?
Aye.
Trustee Belcher?
Aye.
Trustee Mayor Pro Tem House?
Aye.
Your motion passed. Thank you very much, board.
Okay, all right. Uh, next we'll be moving on, uh, we do not have a village administrator's report for this evening. We get a engineer's report, I believe we got one of those. Uh, we'll go to the department reports, uh, start off with the fire department. We have a deputy chief captain.
Thank you, uh, Mayor, House. Trustees, local clerk, uh, all the residents. I didn't have a whole lot to say, but I did want to make sure that really, really something that's near and dear to my heart is my smoke detectors. I went to the app, all right? So please, when on your home, you're in an apartment or whatever you have, call us at the fire department to get, uh, smoke detector, uh, installed into your house. Um, you can call me or... She called Trustee Belcher. All right, so we really want to do that. Um, we will be acknowledging some of our firefighters person, um, work that they've done and they've been, these guys have been really kicking butt on a lot of stuff they do. They include doing their job. Um, so we'll be hearing about them being rewarded pretty soon. Um, as well as we have programs and initiatives that we're starting, especially with the public education. And I think they already kicked that off with the, uh, seniors. And so we are really gonna be moving and we're gonna be collaborating a lot, um, even with the police department. And we're gonna be doing a lot of things together and you're gonna see a little difference in what we do besides coming to your house on a big red truck all the time. All right?
All right.
So, thank you and you guys have a good one.
Thank you.
Excuse me, do we have, do we have anybody, the police department, I don't have a report? Okay, no report from the police, I'm sorry, uh, Clerk Key had an announcement as well?
Okay, it's not an announcement, basically acknowledgement. And I have to acknowledge my deputy clerk because without her, there are so many things that would not have been able to get done. I would not have been able to focus on it.
Thank you, Erin.
Her job is not nine to five, it's like the nine to nine, right? She never stops working. So, you know, she has to get acknowledged for the things that she helped this entire team up here, uh, to get things done when we were out here on the front line fighting for our community. So I just have to give her a special acknowledgement.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll see, uh, if we do not now, do we have a public works? Not at this time, our department, so I believe that's gonna conclude our department reports.
Yes, that's the one.
I'll go next into the reading of, or act of requesting approval for our warrant lists. So first, I'm gonna start off with the electronic payments warrant list, uh, the date on, on it of February twenty eighth, two thousand twenty-five. Corporate payments of eight thousand seven hundred sixty-three dollars and eighty-eight cents. Water fund payments, three hundred ninety-one thousand four hundred fifty-one dollars and seventy-three cents. Total payments on this register, four hundred thousand two hundred fifteen dollars and sixty-one cents. I'll ask if there's a motion for approval.
I make a motion to approve the warrant list.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Hearing a motion by Trustee Belcher and a second by Trustee Norwood, any discussion? Hearing no discussion, please call the roll.
Trustee Tammy Brown?
Aye.
Trustee Norwood?
Aye.
Trustee Stan Brown?
Aye.
Trustee Belcher?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem House?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Okay, next we have the accounts payable warrant list dated April seventh, two thousand twenty-five, with corporate payments of eight hundred eighty thousand sixty-one dollars and seventy-seven cents. Gross payroll from May seventh, four hundred twenty-two thousand five hundred seventy-nine dollars and seven cents. Gross payroll, March twenty-first, four hundred fifteen thousand three hundred one dollars and fifteen cents. Million Fitness Center payments, one thousand two hundred forty-four dollars and thirty-two cents. Total payments on this register, one million seven hundred nineteen thousand one hundred eighty-six dollars and thirty-one cents. Is there a motion to approve the bills as ready?
I make a motion to approve the warrant list.
Second. Okay, hearing a motion by Trustee Belcher and a second by Trustee Stan Brown, uh, any discussion? Hearing no discussion, Clerk Key, please call the roll.
Trustee Tammy Brown?
Aye.
Trustee Norwood?
Aye.
Trustee Stan Brown?
Aye.
Trustee Belcher?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem House?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Okay, no, there is no old business, under new business, we have the discussion of approval for MABAs twenty-four auto aid agreement. I'll ask Deputy Chief to elaborate on this one, will you?
Okay, with the, um, with the MABAs division auto aid, MABAs stands for Mutual Aid Box Arm System. Uh, and this is, uh, of course, a mutual aid system where other towns come in to help us in, uh, in one of our, in our time of need. So we have a structural fire, we have an accident where we have to, uh, kill somebody out of a car or anything like that, or hazardous material incident. We actually have, uh, other towns to come in and help us. And right now, the agreement expands as far as, I think, two of our communities that all come, uh, if, if they're called or there's specialty units that come in to help us, uh, perform these, uh, ordinance tasks. So that's what that's for.
Thank you very much. So I want to make, ask for a motion to approve the auto aid agreement. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Hearing a motion by Trustee Norwood, second by Trustee Belcher, any discussion? Hearing none, Clerk, uh, Trustee Belcher?
How long does that agree?
It's, uh, yearly.
It's annual?
Yeah, yearly, yeah.
Okay.
Any further discussion? If not, Clerk Key, please call the roll.
Trustee Tammy Brown?
Aye.
Trustee Norwood?
Aye.
Trustee Stan Brown?
Aye.
Trustee Belcher?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem House?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Okay, next on the agenda is a discussion around a forensic audit and placing an RFP out for the Village of Dalton, that's Trustee Belcher.
Good evening, everyone, again. Um, I placed this on the agenda, um, for discussion for a forensic audit coming into, uh, the new term, the new administration. Uh, it will give us some clarity on what we don't know. And, um, I asked if we can place a referendum, uh, RFP, I'm sorry, the RFP, um, to get some quotes on how much it's gonna cost. And I know that like if you're old, it may cost so much. It's better to pay than to wait until we're a year down the line and still finding out things that we didn't know about. So, um, with, the scope of this, um, forensic audit would be, um, the police department, the water department, the housing department, um, just in reference to make sure that we know what's happening. And then we can start tackling how we can start fixing it. Um, so the referendum would, um, I mean, I don't know my words, referendum, the RFP. I'm thinking about something right here that I want to talk about, but the RFP, um, would be submitted to the clerk, but it will go on the website. Some people will go on the website and be all of the details that they know a company or something that, but we will be, uh, in search of companies that can do a forensic audit of the village in the price, in the price of order.
Okay, would you like to make a formal motion for us to move this one forward?
Yes, I'm asking for a formal.
Okay, you're making that, is there a second? Okay, I hear the motion from Trustee Belcher and a second from Trustee Tammy Brown. Any further discussion on this? Hearing none, I'll ask Clerk Key for a roll call, please.
Trustee Tammy Brown?
Aye.
Trustee Norwood?
Aye.
Trustee Stan Brown?
Aye.
Trustee Belcher?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem House?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Okay, next on the agenda is a motion to override Mayor Hennier's de facto veto of the following business liquor licenses and allow Mayor Pro Tem House to sign set licenses that have been approved by the corporate authorities, uh, named the ones listed. I'm actually going to ask for an amended motion and I'll read, uh, there are several businesses that we, uh, need to add into this as well, or I'm asking that we add into this. So I hope to those, uh, really slowly so that, um, it could be transcribed and everybody's aware. So we're asking for Born to Explore Development Center, one zero two one East Sibley, Kayu Met Conservation Club, one four seven three six Beachview, Community Leadership for Childrens and Families, one four eight one eight Chicago Road, Dream Rural Furniture, one 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 three Sibley, Illinois Action for Childrens, seven two nine Ingle, J World Beauty, one two two one Sibley, Hat Code, one four six two two Lakeside, PMR Illinois Holdings, which is at six hundred dash six one eight Sibley, five zero Lincoln, SSG Dalton, one four nine zero zero Woodline, The Pope Man Company International, one zero 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 Sibley, it's a one thousand seventy, BTR Way CDL Training School, one four two two zero, Marine Services, one four zero zero one Cottage Grove, RE World, one zero four zero Maryland. Let's see, I think there were a couple of additions. Oh, Marine, uh, Marine Services. That's all there is? Okay, if that will be all of them. Okay, yeah, that, those, so I ask for a, a motion to approve those. Okay, and forty-four East Sibley. So we want to add that as well. So I ask, is there a motion to approve the business licenses as written to record? Motion? Okay, a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Hearing a motion by Trustee Stan Brown, second by Trustee Tammy Brown, uh, any discussion? No discussion, please call the roll.
Trustee Tammy Brown?
Aye.
Trustee Norwood?
Aye.
Trustee Stan Brown?
Aye.
Trustee Belcher?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem House?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Okay. Next on the agenda is item D, motion to accept Premier Banks' offer to bring public works leases current. I'll ask Attorney McGrath to elaborate.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Actually, for item D and E, I guess for a short, uh, executive session, is to go over the terms.
Okay, so we'll move those to executive session and go vote after. Item F is a motion to approve ordinance two five dash zero zero one, providing the commencement of terms for the officers elected at the April first, two thousand twenty-five election for the Village of Dalton. That sounds important. So is there a motion?
I make a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Hearing a motion, Trustee Belcher, second, Trustee Tammy Brown, any discussion? Hearing no discussion, Clerk Key, please call the roll.
Trustee Tammy Brown?
Aye.
Trustee Norwood?
Aye.
Trustee Stan Brown?
Aye.
Trustee Belcher?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem House?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Okay, item G was added in addition to item C, so that has been covered. Uh, the next we would have executive session, is there a motion that we go into executive session?
I make a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Hearing a motion?
The purpose of, uh, pending, uh, and spreading litigation.
Okay, thank you very much. Yeah, Trustee Belcher made the motion, Trustee Stan Brown with the second, uh, Clerk Key, please call the roll.
Trustee Tammy Brown?
Aye.
Trustee Norwood?
Aye.
Trustee Stan Brown?
Aye.
Trustee Belcher?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem House?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned for executive session at seven forty-seven P M.
Executive session. All right, so we are in executive session. My dumbies, why this thing seems so short. So, uh, I really want this thing to like, let me see something. So in the executive session, they're talking about, uh, hold on. So they have to talk about Premier Bank and public works contract. Um, motion to name Mayor Henyard as third party defendant in lawsuit for Metric Media versus Dalton. And, hey, how you doing? And then, uh, sorry, uh, motion to approve ordinance 25-001, providing for the commencement of terms for the officers elected at April 1st, 2025 election for the Village of Dalton attorney. And, uh, so that's for the attorney just to, uh, talk about the commencement of, um, everybody that was just recently elected. And then this a motion to approve business licenses for 44 East Sibley. And then they have something regarding pending or probable or imminent litigation. And they're discussing, uh, appointment, employment compensation, discipline, performance and dismissal of specific employees. So they might be, uh, firing somebody tonight. Might be an interesting executive session after all. So we will see. I'm so, uh, thirsty. I need some water. Hey, say hey, thanks so long.
Yeah, I'm exhausted, you guys. I couldn't wake up either. I, I'm serious, I slept from 1 to 9, 1 PM to 9 PM.
I've been so, I've just been resting and healing and everything else. I'm just glad it's finally over. I'm just super excited. Hey, how you doing? Nice to see you.
Just happy to be here.
Say hey to everybody.
Hey, hi, everybody.
She hit my head. Y'all don't know that hurt so bad. Who child? I don't like being popular. People don't know my trauma. They, um, they didn't have a financial report today. I think Keith Freeman came to talk about the business license for the, uh, the establishment, the liquor licenses. I don't know what's going on with that part. I, I honestly, I'm gonna tell y'all something. I have been, um, out of everything, so I don't know. It's gonna be a good question to find out. I didn't look for it.
We put it in this way. Yeah. And praise God. Praise God.
Yes, indeed.
You can breathe, you can have a disagreement.
Say hey, Kirk. Y'all see the super server? Say hey. We got our village back, eh. It's our time to shine now. Y'all see it? I tell y'all, I am like super hungry. Robert Hunt, he's not part of Dalton, he's part of, um, Thornton Township. Why am I thinking, I know what it is. I'm slow. I am slow, my brain is, you know how people, my brain is, the last few days has just been blanked. That's why I've been taking a break. I had to take a mental break. I think I had a mental breakdown. I'm back now, I'm back in the business. I'm here. Appreciate y'all for joining my life though. I really do. Yeah, it's been a crazy week. Thank you. Say hi to everybody on my live.
Um, I'm a mental health specialist with Division Unlimited and we have a new program that we're launching to provide services specifically for Thornton Township area to provide mental health education supports as well as training. And if anybody needs mental health support or services, we help, uh, provide, whatever. We're primarily looking to help people who are underserved, which is our black community. Because most of us have got mental health services where we need it. We want to make sure that you get connected to the people that you need to see to help with your mental health. But if it has to be anything serious, life stresses brings on a lot. And if those life stresses...
Contact information.
Yeah.
I'm gonna give you my card too.
Yes.
You're not gonna believe it.
No, I'm, I'm for it.
Okay.
Yeah, so life stresses can bring on any of those.
Yes.
Get the support you need upfront so it doesn't develop as much.
I think you should come back. I was playing with this thing earlier. I need to see something. There was some kind of bowl that I put it on.
You remember this place? Uh, you get your, uh, tray and go down.
Thank you for watching. I appreciate everybody that's sticking it out with me. I'm going live tomorrow too for the Thornton Township, uh, annual meeting, so that was gonna be interesting. I, I really want to see who show up for that meeting tomorrow. So, definitely gonna go live for that one. Yeah, Tiffany done. Y'all better catch her on her YouTube channel. Hold on, y'all, I'm trying to fix this. Oh, I can only do it in their actual app. I'm the guy. That's what it is. I'm sorry, y'all. I was trying to, uh, go around the world.
So I, I figured out about this, I don't know, but I did it. Well, they got Dalton, they got... I'm not sure which, just...
The meeting tomorrow, I think it's at 6. I just noticed I got my button on my shoulder. Put it on wrong. Nobody even paying attention when I put it on. I used the bad phone. I probably should. What? Go. Say hey. Is everything okay at the house?
Oh, okay. Everything's copacetic.
Okay.
Just some imitation, I can do imitations of some people. Which, I guess you could say famous, um, Dalton resident am I. There's no, there's a bad that Hoes was here.
I think Cookie with Franko here too. Cassandra. The one that said everybody is stalking her, nobody's stalking her. She's so delusional. I'm just glad that nobody voted for her. I'm surprised the 4% that she got.
I'm surprised she's not here going.
She's not gonna come and show up to this, uh, meeting because she knows that it's a professional one. So she's not gonna show up.
She can't, they would lay the smacketh down upon...
I'm just glad...
They would negatively lay the smacketh down.
I'm just glad that it's over. Give them all word of advice.
Words of advice, um, let's see.
Voting going forward.
Voting going forward, um, so far it seems like there's a great team together. I've noticed the energy, the difference in energy. Now, we have seen, um, Bear House leave these meetings before, but the energy today just seems different. It seems a lot more positive and you could feel the vibe in the room. Keep it going and most importantly, hold them accountable.
Absolutely.
You know, we've got people in Ireland, we've got people in Australia and people in New Zealand that know about all this. So basically, there's some dude eating kiwi, there's someone throwing a shrimp on the barbie, boxing a kangaroo and a freaking leprechaun that know about the crap that went on here. Um, you know, hold people accountable and, you know, put their feet to the fire if you need to, but make sure everything stays on track going forward. Keep everything positive and work together as a community. There seems to be a lot more sense of community now
Yeah.
as opposed to adversarial before.
You know what it is? It's the morale has really raised.
Oh, absolutely.
The morale is like very high right now because you know that she done. And like, no matter what, it's, it's, it's a rap.
You know, you can physically feel the difference in the rumors.
It's positivity.
You know, I've, I've never been a believer in, oh, I feel positive energy, I feel negative energy. I physically feel the positive freaking energy and that's when I'm a non-believer. I mean, it's here, people. It's a new day and just keep it moving forward.
And a lot of people don't understand what we've been, would you? They, a lot of them don't understand.
You can't grasp it.
The violence, the...
Yeah, you know, a, a lot of people...
Everything that has been put upon us residents, put upon our community, the things that we had to go through, the bullying.
Right.
Can't get into meetings, it's just like, it's been hate.
Yeah, you know, um, a lot of people from outside, you know, technically I'm an outsider, I don't live in Dalton. You know, a lot of people...
We adopted you.
A lot, a lot of people see it
Yeah.
and they s, they see the drama. It's like, you know, me growing up in the eighties watching Dallas or Dynasty. But what a lot of people forget, you know, they're watching this for that jaw dropping moment that, oh gee, I can't believe she pulled that move.
Yeah.
I mean, behind every move like that, there's 20,000 people that are affected by that, oh my god move or
Yeah.
that person's attitude. And that is something that gets lost in translation between watching the meetings and living in the village day to day.
Right.
Um, another way I could put it, it's like watching Deadliest Catch saying, oh yeah, I could do that catch those crabs. Or what doesn't translate is that's 20 freaking below when you're out there on the deck for 24 hours.
Right.
You know, there, there's a disconnect between watching it and living it.
And living it, you say it.
It's real. I mean, it's real.
Now, tell everybody, when you served her.
Okay, which time?
The first half, let's talk about the first half first.
All right.
So what was the purpose behind you serving her again? Was it, um...
Oh, that was, uh, brother, um, brother Isom, Tyrone Isom Jr. Yeah, he went to open the bar, it was a barber shop and he was gonna have a daycare on it. And according to his lawsuit, he did everything that he was told to bring the building to code and, um, and everything he needed to do, spent about $80,000 roughly out of pocket to get everything there and then Henyard didn't want to approve it. And what ended up happening, he had to sell the business because he couldn't, you know, it was vacant. I mean, he couldn't open it, make money off of it, he needed money. They sold the business and somehow, way, shape or form, uh, Mr., uh, who am I now? I misunderstood. Kamal ended up with the building.
What, Kamal?
Kamal ended, oh no, not anymore because Kamal got it.
Are you serious?
And then sold it for a $100,000 profit.
Get the fuck out of here.
Shoot me dead if I'm lying, it's right there in the, um, in the complaint.
I didn't know that part of it.
Kamal somehow, I don't know how Kamal got the building.
We know.
Uh, well, I mean,
Right.
in terms, in terms of the transaction, I mean, was it sold from Isom to Woods or did Isom, um, did Isom sell it to someone else who then sold it towards that? I don't know.
Okay.
But I do know Kamal ended up with the property and sold it for a $100,000 profit. That is factual.
That's crazy. Okay, I get you. I'm about to give you a hug in a sec. Tell them about the second one. So is that one still ongoing? Is she coming to court for that? But she hasn't been coming to court for the Roberts.
Yeah, I, I have no idea.
I wonder if she doing any court cases now?
I'm out of it. Second one, oh, that was the eviction.
Yeah.
So I, um, so yeah, I, I'm a racist because of me, um, Tiffany Henyard is a, um, a homeless single mother because of me, because I served her papers. So, yeah, I'm, I'm the evil devil, I'm the white guy, yeah.
You see me rolling my eyes at you. Right.
Yeah.
Come on now, whatever.
But you know, there's, um...
Nobody believes that.
I, I don't even believe it. I just gotta make fun of her and I've heard her babble where she talks about keeping a black woman down.
No, you got to pay your rent.
Exactly. And who was she not paying rent to? A black woman.
Thank you. And then not only that, if you can't pay your rent, give them back their property.
Exactly.
It's just that easy.
And at $2,400 a month when your boyfriend's making $100,000 a year and you're making, what, wasn't she making $350,000 a year? And you can't pay $2,400 bucks a month?
No, she can.
Get the fuck out of here.
She can.
She, oh yeah, she can, she don't want to.
No, she didn't want to.
There's an issue with that. So, yeah, that was number two. That's where I turned her into a single unemployed homeless mother. Um, number three was, um...
Oh, there was a third one.
The barbecue joint.
Right, right. I forgot, there was a third one.
Yep, Woods Barbecue. Now, this one was good because I got some very sloppy cell phone video of it. Now, if you look at the video the first time where, um, Tahoe says, oh, I don't care about being sued, I get sued all the time. It's nothing. Just call me, it's nothing. Well, I waited outside the back of Thornton Township because there was a meeting scheduled. Now, it's important, the meeting was scheduled. So first,
Right.
a car pulls up that is somehow connected to Tahoe.
Right.
Then Kamal, um, Leotis pulls up, Tiffany gets out, I jump out and out of service, Tiffany, of course, runs in the building thinking she can avoid bullshit.
Right.
Um, then Kamal says, you better not put that shit on my car. Yeah, okay, once again, boom. And I put it on the window of his BMW and he served on that one. Now, the meeting, like I said, she came to the meeting and the meeting was scheduled. She never went to the meeting, she went to the building, she never went into the meeting.
Right.
That's when she went inside her office.
And went live.
Probably and allegedly snorted about, um, a scar face pile of cocaine and gave that really crazy Facebook rant for, how long that lasted? 20, 30 minutes or was it longer?
No, that was like 45
45 minutes, yeah.
To 50 minutes.
And she was talking like this, hey, I, you know, I love the people.
I'm done, I'm done. But then she kept talking. Like, no, you're not done.
You could almost see the way...
She's done now. Tell them she's done now, but at that, on that rant, she wasn't done.
No. Um, there's some, um, some stuff I can't go into on at least one of the cases, um, we should see a major development on one of them within the next.
I hope so.
And I can't say which one.
No, it's okay.
If it's sworn to silence.
No, it's okay.
But when it comes, I promise you, um,
Okay.
I promise I'll tell what I'm able to tell.
Just tag me so I can report it to them.
Oh, no problem, you know, and I, I'm, I'm sure I know a few people out there and, um, super server loves ya.
Yes.
So, uh, I was gonna ask, how was the, uh, food at St. Patrick's?
It was pretty good.
Yeah, what'd you have?
I had, um, salmon and shrimp, um, like a fettuccine kinda.
Okay, yeah, 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 yeah. I know fettuccine, I'm Italian, unless it's, you're saying I don't know fettuccine?
No.
See, some cereal... See, some stereotypes are okay. Italians, we all do know pasta.
Because you know what I was about to say, uh, not fettuccine, but what is, it's, it's another one that's made like fettuccine.
Linguine?
Alfredo. I think it was Alfredo, though.
Alfredo's the sauce.
The sauce, okay.
Yeah, the white sauce.
But it's still fettuccine?
Fettuccine's the noodle.
So, fettuccine Alfredo.
Yeah, so that means you got a fettuccine noodle with Alfredo sauce. Any questions about anything regarding whops, ask me. I mean, I'm right here. You got a wop, you may as well use it. Your own personal greaseball.
That was so good, though. It was a good combination, because they gave me like a whole piece of salmon.
Yeah, yeah.
And then like about five pieces of shrimp.
Okay.
And then the pasta. Yeah, yeah, it was, it was really good.
I've got one hell of a good paycheck coming next month. I'm taking the wife over there.
Okay. It's, it's gonna be nice. It's gonna be nice. She'll like it. It's very beautiful inside. And the, it's just like the ambiance, you know, it's just, it's, it's good for a date night.
Yeah, I mean, you drive by that place, and that, you look inside, and it just like...
It looks, it's a sexy vibe.
Reeks of glass awesomeness and sexiness. I mean, you can smell it just driving by the place.
They have, um, a second floor, no, so they have the third floor. Then the, they have some stairs, and then, so it's, it's six floors in there.
There's six floors in there?
Yes, they have six floors. So, they have the liquor store that's on the very first floor. Yeah, it's an elevator. You have to take the elevator up, um, and they have the roof, the rooftop is on the sixth.
Okay.
Then the fifth floor is, um, I, I think it's an event space or something.
Okay.
Um, the, I know the fourth floor is for their employees, and then the second and third floor, I believe, it's like the restaurant, but you can go upstairs too.
Okay.
Yeah.
I wanna see what they do with that rooftop in the summer.
I do too.
That's gonna be cool.
They have, um, karaoke on, um, August, I mean, August, I'm talking, April fifteenth, so everybody, karaoke April fifteenth. Lady Red is doing it, so we all come out and support the St. Patrick's on that day, if we can. It's free to get in, so it's, um, it, it don't pay, you don't have to pay to, um, do karaoke.
And if I'm not working on assignments, I will be there and I will sing Black Sabbath.
Please come, oh my god.
I am, I am. Yeah, I'll do some Black Sabbath if I'm not working.
Seriously, I'm gonna tag, I'm gonna tag, I'm gonna send you an inbox and then let me know.
Yeah.
If you work. That's to, um, April the fifteenth, a Tuesday.
The day your taxes should be in.
Right, that's what she call it, tax day.
Have you done your taxes yet?
First off, I'm disabled. I don't have to file taxes this year. Yay, me.
I've gotta file them. I haven't started.
Uh, I think it starts at seven. Yeah, it's in the evening, yeah. Yeah, but Lady Red, she really good with, uh, carry, good. You, you been to her karaoke's before? But, yeah. Yeah, yeah, she does a lot. Yeah, I love her.
Let's see, I could do Black Sabbath, or I could do, um, Every Rose Has Spent Poison.
So, if you come, we are going to do a duet, so be ready.
Okay, um...
We're going to get you out there.
What song?
I don't know, we'll figure it out.
Okay.
The better, look, I'm just gonna be drinking, so be ready. I can't wait. Well, we definitely need that restaurant in our community. Let's just say, how much does that cost? How much does blood cost?
ABBA. Oh, Dancing Queen, All About It. All About Dancing Queen, yes.
That's my song. I'm hearing it in my head, yes.
Yeah, you know, I mean, I was at Michael Monroe Show in Michigan and St. Charles.
I love your pictures, so y'all...
He, um, yeah, he, actually winked at my wife. My wife flew him a kiss, and he winked at her, and I don't know, that was cool. But, um, yeah, people might think, wow, you know, I used to have the long hair, all heavy metal, no. I am all about ABBA. Dancing Queen, Waterloo, boom, ABBA rocks.
Yeah, yeah, I love that Dancing Queen song, that's my song.
It's, it's just, it reeks of such seventies cheese and nostalgia.
Yeah.
And, uh, I remember eight-track tapes, so...
Listen, I do too. First off, I'm, I'm not that young. I might look a little young, but...
You look very young.
I'm forty-seven. Well, I'll be forty-seven in July.
Okay.
That is not that young.
Speed limit, fifty-five.
Okay, you a little bit older than me, just a little bit.
I got the gray hair to prove it.
I just dyed my hair yesterday. That's why I look like that.
My hair didn't start turning gray until I got married.
My hair started turning gray in my twenties. It's not like super gray, but I just don't like the, the gray feel in my hair, so I just put a rinse in it.
I wear so many damn hats, literally, so...
What, what you do in the summer?
Um, either my Kansas City Chiefs hat, maybe my, um, Chicago Cubs hat. Yeah, oh yeah. And I also get my haircut straight. Now, I would be completely bald. Used to catch those acts in concert, um, which acts, um, Sabbath or, um, ABBA? Seventies baby. How about, um, the rock band, um, Sweet, um, song Ballroom Blitz, uh, Wig Wam Bam, Little Willie, Fox on the Run. I got a band that I'm playing with. We're doing a one-night-only. We gotta schedule it. It's, it's a one-off.
Okay.
It's a one-off. In fact, we haven't thrown a name to it.
So, what instrument you play?
I play bass guitar.
Okay, I know.
And, um, what we're gonna do...
How many years?
Uh, since, uh, nineteen eighty-four, after I first heard Motley Crue's Shout at the Devil album.
Okay.
Look at the cover of the album, Mickey Six, the guy with the blinds under each eyes. I looked at it and thought, that's what I wouldn't do when I grow up. My mom, of course, was thrilled, um...
Right.
So...
You know us mothers, we love for our sons.
Oh, yeah, hey mom, I wanna play bass guitar and get lots of girls and drink a lot. Oh, good job.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, we'll send you to college for that.
No, you're not, son.
Um, Frampton, yes, Frampton Comes Alive, um, so, end of this month, we don't have a date scheduled. It's gonna be either end of this month or early May. We're doing an entire set, Sweet's Greatest Hits, and we're wearing the full, like nineteen seventy-four costumes.
Where at?
Platform shoes, um, Silver Lemay Fringe, sequins, all that stuff. It's gonna look like the video for, you know, like the songs I said, Little Willie, Fox on the Run. Yeah, we're doing the whole early seventies glam rock.
That's what's up.
And, um, I might even, um, take the straightening iron into my hair, dye it black and blue and all that for it. And then I'll have an excuse to shave my head, which I've always wanted to do.
You've never shaved your head bald?
Yeah, I want to. My wife said she would kill me if I did. In fact, I got a...
I, I don't like bald guys. I don't know why, but...
Here, I, I got a good story for you.
I know, I, it sounds, I just, I don't know, I can't date anybody bald.
For me, it's just something I haven't done, so I wanna do it. But, a couple of years ago, on Valentine's Day, I walked out the door, much like I am now. Clean shaven, head of hair, I walk out the door. I took a filter, took a picture of me, took a filter. I was bald and had a goatee, and I sent it to my wife. And she goes, do not come the fuck home.
I did send it to my...
She was pissed, and, uh, my mother-in-law was over, so I guess my wife's throwing stuff around and just storming around all mad. I came home, hi honey, I'm home, you know, I had hair and everything. I didn't have the goatee, and she's like, okay, what the, yeah, 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 yelling at me. I'm like, honey, it was a filter, it's a joke. Look, I have hair, but she was still angry. I think after I got home, it was about an hour, hour and a half before she talked to me and looked at me. And it was on Valentine's Day.
Listen, my daughter's father came home bald. I was like, what the fuck? I didn't talk to him until he blew his hair back. Like, it was so unattractive to me.
Wow.
I'm sorry, but it's like, no, that's not a good look at all.
I think for me, my hair's naturally curly, and if I like fall asleep and wet head, that my hair ends up all lopsided or... Gilbert Einstein and that kind of crap.
Hereditary, I get it, right?
Yeah.
But...
In fact, my grandpa, he kept his hair through, uh, chemotherapy.
Did he?
He didn't lose any hair during chemotherapy.
See, I lost, uh, like, all of this right here, but it's grown back. But when I had my radiation, I lost like, it just fell off like butter.
Wow.
But it grew back, so, look at God.
Well, it's looking good, uh, like the pullback look.
Yeah, thank you.
That's working.
Listen, I told you, I washed my hair yesterday and put a rinse in it, so... I don't know what I'm gonna do with it next. Uh, I'm not good at combing my hair, and then I can't really comb my hair, because I can't keep my arms over my head for too long, because it hurts so bad.
I kinda understand. I had a, uh, would have had, um, an impingement and stuff, and, um, it's in my left arm. I couldn't lift my arm pass to this point.
Yeah.
Then the wife would sit down next to me on the couch, pick my arm up to put it around her, ah, screaming. Ah, you know what? No, I just can't move my arm.
Right.
Had physical therapy for that.
Yeah, that's what, I mean, um, occupational therapy.
Okay.
And then my physical therapy, it starts in June. But it's just, it's hard. And my, especially if the weather is bad.
Mm-hmm.
When the weather is bad, my hand get like tremors.
Ah...
And my leg, so...
No fun, no fun.
That's why I have to use a walker and a cane every day. Not that I'm broken, but it's, you know, my leg gives out.
Sometimes you need to take the pressure off.
Yeah, I have to.
Yeah, if the knee ain't gonna work, you got that to...
Yeah.
Like, you throw the knee on the cushion part, it's good.
Right, but, you know, I don't think I'll ever be able to get away from using a walker, because my illness is weather-related, so even if I strengthen my legs, my legs still go out.
Okay, but here's a question I think viewers would like to know. You know, we've seen the walker and everything.
Uh-huh.
You thought about pimping it out?
I have. I think I started my cane, but then my things fell off, so I gotta figure out another way to, um, to pimp it out.
Like, the frame of this, we gotta pimp that out. I'm thinking maybe some LEDs.
Ooh, you know what? I'm gonna see if I can find one too.
Yeah.
You got a good idea going on there, okay.
When it comes to over-the-top showmanship, boom, I think of it, yeah. LEDs would be good.
That's a good idea.
Some kind of sparklers or something on the, um, on the tires.
Yes.
Yeah.
I'm gonna look up some LED lights though.
Yeah.
Because I'm very...
On that being, let's see, ooh, maybe a grill, like, remember the movie...
Hey, you know what? I got some, uh, see, all my stuff is in storage, but I do have some, um, some blings, like strip blings?
Yeah.
That I could put on there?
That's what you do, remember the movie Superfly? Right down here, headlights that look like, um, faces.
You see, I already got my cup holder.
Oh, that's perfect.
So, y'all gonna help me pimp out my, uh, my walker? So...
Throw some scars on it like Steven Tyler's microphone stand.
Y'all see, I already got my cup holder on here. Now, I'm gonna get some LED lights, and then like pimp this part out. My son, he ruined that part. But put like some bling all over this, probably some bling down here. What y'all think?
Got to get a personalized license plate, too.
Yeah, you know what? I got one.
Okay.
It's in my storage.
There you go, there you go.
I'm, I'm actually going to do that. That's, 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 that's what I'm going to do. I wanna make it look nice.
You know, I mean, it's not necessarily your, it wasn't your decision. Yes, I want to use this, you have to.
I have to.
But you can make the best, the most out of it, and just make it scream, boom, you...
Okay, I'm gonna tell you all this story, and this is only because you were talking about this, so... When I lost my forehead, I had to wear a helmet for, um, three months. And you've seen helmets.
Yeah.
And, um...
I almost had to wear one myself, hundred pounds of steel to the head.
Oh my god. So, it was embarrassing, but when I leave out in public, well, even if I'm in the house, I had to have a helmet on. So, I got a, uh, a beanie hat.
There, there you go. Perfect. And you know what's funny about that?
Nobody ever saw my helmet outside of the hospital.
That's in, you know, in districts.
Because of how big it was. So, even though the beanie hat was like big over the helmet.
Right.
But it like took you a minute to realize like, what's that?
Like, no, she's not a Rastafarian with a big Rasta headband. She's actually a helmet under there, right? Something like that?
Oh my god, yes. But all of the nurses like, oh my god, you are so creative. They was like, we would have never thought about that, so...
Yeah, nurses wouldn't, but I'm thinking, um, let's see.
I'm going to cut out my walker.
Find a picture of my head injury. Where is it? Um...
That's a good idea.
Yeah, there's, um, after I got nailed in the head. See, I had the Alice Cooper bruising under the eyes.
Oh my god.
The scar there and the big old pumpkin head. Boom, that's a hundred, that's what a hundred pounds of steel does to your forehead.
Oh my, where was you at? On a work bike?
Carpet cleaner, yeah, I was, I used to be a carpet cleaner, and a pole fell from about, um, top, or the top of where the, where the peak of the roof is.
Uh-huh.
Sixteen-foot pole fell, bounced off something, swung around, hit me in the head. This would be after brain surgery.
Oh my...
I'm sorry, I did have a bald head once. I was bald once, that was brain surgery. The pressure built up on my brain, so they had to drill a hole in my head, let the pressure out. Yeah, and then, um, they also had to put a plate in my head to attach my nose.
Oh my god.
And you can kinda see the Alice Cooper type bru- uh, bruising. But after I woke up from surgery, that's the first time they let me see what I looked like. Now, what they had done, doctor felt bad about shaving all my hair off, so he left me just a ponytail like them samurai dudes. So, I had that, then I've got the Alice Cooper bruising, then I had staples from ear to ear, so I looked like a cyborg samurai Alice Cooper.
Oh my god.
I woke up, look at myself, well, my mom's all crying, she's got tears, because she's a mom. I look at it, I go, oh, this is cool, can I keep the staples?
Are you serious?
Oh yeah, I look badass.
How long was you in the hospital?
Uh, what, three and a half weeks, and it was, um, yeah.
Did you have to go through therapy?
Oh yeah, I had, uh, what, I have six weeks of therapy, physical therapy, uh, for a while. I couldn't, um, I couldn't walk upright, and I couldn't walk around a corner without falling off, because my balance is all off.
That's how I am.
But, yeah, I just lived at home. I'm like, screw it, I don't know what's gonna happen, but one way or another, I'm either gonna get over it, I'm gonna learn to deal with it.
I would have never guessed that. You've been through it.
Yeah, I would. You know, and, but yeah, I got the cancer reminder, I got the thing in my head.
Oh my god.
Couldn't have been worse, it couldn't have been dead.
You, yeah, so I'm not, I'm happy you here.
Well, you know, when I was recovering, I couldn't, um, I couldn't read. All I could do was watch TV. That's when I went and started watching all my favorite seventies detective shows, um, Columbo, Quinn, C-Rock, The Files.
Oh, you had to do speech therapy to, um, to like gain your memory back, or?
Nah, my memory, um, yeah, my memory was shot, like, you know, one band I had, I wrote all the songs, I had thirty songs. I could only remember, I had to play three of them. But, no, my memory's still good. In fact, from watching all the seventies cops shows, I was like, hell, I'm gonna go back to college, get my degree, and now here I am, super server, private investigator. I got a hundred percent in like three of my classes.
How old were you at that time?
I was... Uh, thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine.
Yeah.
Wow, I would have never guessed that.
You know, I ain't gonna let it define who I am.
You can't.
Could it help me become who I am? Yeah, it did, but...
Right.
But hey.
Oh my god, I am so grateful you are still here.
You can still feel where the um.
Do you have bad headaches when it rains?
Nope.
No neurological issues? You blessed.
Nah, the first couple of years were rough, our memory would get rough first, but it's all fine now.
That's amazing. I hope you sued that site.
Oh, I sued him, I got some money and I promptly used it for Cubs tickets. Well, see, here's the thing, me and my dad.
Say some Cubs tickets.
Yeah, uh, see, me and my dad used to go to um, opening day at Wrigley Field every year from ninety-nine, nineteen ninety-nine up until this happened. Now, I was out of the hospital in time where I could have gone to opening day, but everyone was like, no, you're not going, you're not going, but that was the first opening day in ten years that my dad and I missed. In fact, when I got a lawyer, I had told um, I told my parents, I go, unless the lawyer's a Cubs fan, you do not bring him in this fucking room.
Right.
Uh, well, so one day I wake up, like, oh yeah, this is so and so, he's a lawyer. He goes, oh Kurt, I have Cubs season tickets, would you like a pair? You're hired dude.
Hello. Oh my god. So I love the Cubs over the Sox.
Like I, I proposed to my wife.
Cubs games are much more fun than the White Sox games, is your opinion?
Well, people actually go to Cubs games.
Yeah.
Whereas, you know, White Sox, if they're winning, oh, they don't go, if they're losing, they don't go. Um, ah, Steve says hi.
Tell him I said hey.
She says hey, hey brother.
Everybody said, what made you become a process server? That's a good question.
It's, it's part of being a private investigator. Now, people think being a private investigator means you're sitting in a car, you're staking people out or whatever, it's, nah, um, in Illinois, under the license, it's process serving, um, process serving, pri- uh, private investigation, you can also do security work, and you could do locksmith work.
Okay.
But um, damn near any private investig- um, private detective agency is gonna offer process service.
Okay.
Um, and I make good money at it.
So what um, how many licenses do you have to have? Like, could you, just one?
Just one, for Illinois.
Okay. And that license cover everything that you just said, or it has to be specific?
That covers everything I said, um. Um, I couldn't pull out of my wallet, I didn't put any um, uh, I haven't laminated it, but um, the license, uh, license allows you to serve papers, be a private investigator, be a security guard, or be a locksmith.
Okay.
In fact, after I'm done here tonight, I get to go be a security guard. There's a rich guy and I'm, I'm at three hours of sleep and I gotta work till seven uh, thirty in the morning, and then run around in the morning.
Walk him around, or?
Nah, I just gotta sit in the car and make sure nobody um, tries to break into his house. And if somebody does, I can shoot them.
Hey.
Yeah.
That's a great gig. That's crazy.
But um, yeah, the license will cover Illinois and um, any case that originates out of Illinois. I've also got a license in Iowa, I've gotta take the test for the license in Wisconsin, I've got Indiana license. And then um, through other agencies that work for, they've got license in Michigan, so I'll go up to Michigan. At one time, I, I had to drive all the way up to fricking Detroit in the morning, knock on the door, talk to a lady for ten minutes and then drive.
Come back home?
Well, should have, but instead I went down to Indianapolis, worked on another case, and then went to um, where the hell is it? Notre Dame Place, South Bend, Indiana, went there and then back to Chicago.
That was a long day.
Yeah.
That's a lot of driving. From here to Detroit, Detroit to Indianapolis, Indianapolis to South Bend, South Bend.
So I've been back to Chicago. I've put, I've put at least thirty thousand miles a year on my car. I've, I've had my car, let's see. I've had my car two and a half years, I bought it with thirty-seven thousand miles on it, I'm um, about to hit a hundred and twenty thousand miles. And it's, I haven't even had it for three years.
Listen. My car that I have now is a starter car, so I gotta get a tune-up, like ASAP, I gotta find somebody to do it for me. But uh.
I got a guy, but he's all the way up almost near Evanston. Yeah, that's probably a little far.
I got family out of Evanston.
Ah, they're coming back.
Ooh, we got, we got trustees. Alright, they're coming back y'all, I need to turn the camera around. Ain't no stopping us now. This is not how I want this to be. Sorry. I'm left-handed y'all, so it didn't look right. I know, it's weird. You're okay. Y'all seen me trying to get up and sneak away? Sorry y'all. What did I just do? There we go.
Okay, we're on.
Sorry y'all. My man.
Time is eight thirty-one, I'd like for a motion to reconvene this meeting.
I make a motion.
Can you second?
Second.
Motion by trustee Belcher, second by trustee Tammy Brown, clerk T please call her on.
Trustee Tammy Brown?
Aye.
Trustee Norwood?
Aye.
Trustee Stan Brown?
Aye.
Trustee Belcher?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Sam House?
Aye.
Here we go, go into approval of item D. Going to item D, motion to accept premier base offer of ring from work, leases current, is there a motion?
Motion.
Second, here a motion, trustee Norwood. We got a second by trustee Stan Brown, pause for a moment. Trustee Norwood. And trustee Stan Brown. Any discussion? Here it is, clerk T please call her on.
Trustee Tammy Brown?
Aye.
Trustee Norwood? Trustee Stan Brown?
Aye.
Trustee Belcher?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Sam House?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Okay, next is a motion to name Mayor Higgy as third-party defendant who also with Metro Media versus Village of Dalton, is there a motion?
Motion.
Any second?
Second.
Okay, motion is trustee Belcher, second trustee Tammy Brown, any discussion? Here it is, please call her on.
Trustee Tammy Brown?
Aye.
Trustee Norwood?
Aye.
Trustee Stan Brown?
Aye.
Trustee Belcher?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Sam House?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Okay, and then is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Alright.
Motion trustee Belcher, second trustee Norwood, and third trustee Stan Brown. Please call her on.
Tammy Brown?
Aye.
Trustee Norwood?
Aye.
Trustee Stan Brown?
Aye.
Trustee Belcher?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Sam House?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned at eight thirty-four PM.
I got you, alright. Alright y'all, we are adjourned, that is the end of the meeting. Now I gotta get my life together. So this is, everybody's leaving now. Hey, how you doing? Everything is good, how about you? That's good. Okay. I gotta take this um, off the stand y'all. Not about to walk outside with this thing. I'm gonna hold it in my hand. Hold on one second. I figured it out, I broke it now. Hi baby. Hey. How you doing?
Good, how are you?
Alright. Hey. You got some sucker? He's like, nah. See you later.
Oh, I did. Well, I came in with a purpose.
I'm sorry y'all. Now putting my stuff away, cause I can't have all that stuff in my hands when I get to the car.
You got a rig up? How you been?
You, you saw my text, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You got me?
What's that? It's this Saturday?
No, August twelfth.
Yeah, you need a contract this day, right?
Well, I, I wanted one so I can make sure you don't book shit out there, cause I don't know what you're saying.
What's that look like?
And you go and, and, and use somebody else on that day. So yeah. Whenever you get a chance though, it don't have to be this week. Just put that on your calendar, I'm gonna text it to you, okay? Whew, my stomach is killing me y'all. This is the end. Oh, hold on. I got something better for y'all. I forgot, I got a uh, I got a, a finger strap on my phone case now y'all. I'm about to walk to my car. Yeah, I'll see y'all, mayor. I'm gonna get out of here, nah, you good.
You ever need any car work, man, let me know.
Well, what kind of car work you do? I just said I get a tune-up. Give me your uh, information. Oh, you want me to take a picture? So now you want me to go, I'm gonna give you my card. Text me, okay?
So she's been uh.
Hold on, one second y'all. Don't fall, Kay, please don't fall. I got some cards in my wallet. They didn't say nothing about uh, any termination, so I don't think nobody got fired. How you doing? Here, I'm gonna give you one of my cards.
Okay, I'll text you.
Yes, text me please, I need a uh, a tune-up.
That's the first thing I'm thinking of.
Seriously. Do you? Okay, well, we'll talk. Alright, have a good one, you too. Can you move that chair just a little bit for me? I appreciate you so much. Alright, see y'all later. I'm coming to y'all things just cause it's spades.
Yes, come on, I, I phone for that spade.
Listen. I don't know how to play beer whistle, every time they do that, I'm like, I don't play beer whistle. Listen, absolutely, see y'all later. I'm sorry. Thank y'all for walking me to my car and staying on land just a little bit longer. Hey Marcus. I'm good, how are you?
I'm good.
We won, y'all did that.
That's right, that was a good promo you did earlier.
I tell everybody, say hey.
Hey. Clean House Twenty Twenty-Five.
Absolutely. This man worked hard for Clean House Twenty Twenty-Five.
Thank you, appreciate it so much.
Said so much, and then he even had to re-bring my sign, cause somebody stole it.
That's right. Wanna make sure everybody gets their signs and also know, this is history to make it right.
We made history.
That's it.
H-I-S, story.
You?
His story. Alright, I'll see you later. See y'all later, have a good day, hey. Yes ma'am.
I've been wanting to see you for twenty-one years. I'm at that point in my life, I'm waiting for you, I just like to say hey, yeah.
I'm, when is the.
My favorite second, like four week my life.
Okay, yes, give me a call. Alright, thank you, alright, see y'all later. Hey Stan Brown, how are you? Say hey to everybody.
How you doing today? Uh, good meeting and everything were real good, and I'm glad you enjoyed this opportunity.
I had a good day, yeah. Absolutely, it was an absolutely nice place. That's super. See you later, I'm getting the heck out of here. Alright, see you later, I'm gonna go out, yeah, I'm sorry. Oh, alright, have a good day. I like his little shoes, oh. Thank you. Alright y'all, that was a great meeting. That was straight to the point, we got business taken care of. And it's freezing out here, let me go my butt home. It's freezing out here. How far you parked? Oh, okay. Be safe. Gotta tell y'all, it's freezing out here. It is free-e-cing, and I got on rocks. I can't do this. So um, with the commissioner, when I was just speaking with, we're gonna do a um, a health and um, kind of wellness event here for the Park District. Uh, in the fall. Please, don't fly nowhere. Oh shit. My leg is not my friend right now. I'm sorry. No, you need a ride? You good? Let me know, I could give you a ride if anyone too. If she don't. And she probably got a car seat, I ain't got no car seat. I can't put no keys in my car. Oh shit. I'm sorry y'all. I am out of breath. This one. I am putting this walk in this car. Takes all my energy. I hate bringing it out. God, I'm out of breath. I keep my keys on my cane. Y'all see this? I always have my cane with me, so can never leave my keys or lose my keys, right? Seventy-six degrees out there, you guys are lucky. It is so cold right now. I don't even know what the, the temperature is. And I gotta catch my breath. But sorry, it's very cold. Um, now what I was saying was that um, I'm planning to do a event with the Park District, but that is in the fall. But before that event, um, my goal is to do a walk for um, tumor awareness. Now, this walk will be for everyone in the community that have suffered from either cancerous or non-cancerous tumors. Um, my goal is to, um, it's gonna be August the tenth, I already have the date in the um, Park District. And uh, it's already set, so from ten to four PM is the time slot that I um, chose. I have my DJ, my DJ is going to be uh, anybody from Chicago, DJ Eric Martin. He um, used to DJ at the Public League with me, and he um, actually just beat cancer um, as well, so he's um, he's going to um, help with this event, and um, he's a wonderful, one of the low-end DJs um, that's been DJing for years, he's like part of the um, the ones that um, do the house music, why I can't think, yeah, one of like the legendary house music DJs as well. So um, that's going to be August the tenth, I am not asking anybody for donations. Um, I wanna do this event by fundraising, and um, I wanna fundraise and sell um, my products. So um, I'm in process of making bracelets, so this fundraiser, for the bracelets that I'm selling for the fundraiser, they're gonna be five dollars each. Um, very nice bracelets, um, very nice beads, but um, they're not gonna be custom, I'm just going to make a whole bunch. And so um, they're gonna be five dollars each, um, but they're, they're gonna be nice. I, I actually have some that I made that's already at home. So um, I might make a video um, either later, or when I go live tomorrow, I can show you guys um, just some of the um, braces that I'm selling. But um, like I said, I wanna do it as a fundraiser event, because I want it to be free for everyone that's coming out. Now, I do need vendors, so um, if anybody wants to be a vendor at this event, you can email me, my email address is um, I don't even know why I put on my turn and signal, it don't work. But you can email me as survivor viv one, S-U-R-V-I-V-O-R, V-I-V, the number one, at gmail dot com. And just let me know, um, the date is August the tenth, it's one hundred percent set and solidified um, at the Park District. And I really, really want to make this a big event, and hopefully something yearly, um, like an annual walk. Um, and like I said, this is, my birthday is July twenty-sixth, um, so it's scheduled for August the tenth, but that was the date that they had available, so um, it's like a, a late birthday gift, so I just, if, if people just show up, um, that, that'll make me happy, so um, like I said, I just want people to come out and support this walk. Especially people that have family members that have suffered from um, tumors is basically cancer, cancerous or non-cancer tumors, um, that's what we are um, science, um, basically walking for, so anybody that's had breast cancer, um, any type of um, lung cancer, um, just all tumors that have been removed, that's what we really are trying to um, get people to um, come out and walk for, so um, that's what I'm trying to do, and I think that it's just, it's a big, it's a big thing that I wanna do by myself, for myself. And just to see if I can really fundraise and be successful at doing something, so. Um, I'm not gonna hold y'all too, too much longer, thank everybody that's listening that's um, letting me get home safe, but um, it's really um, it's really something that I wanna do and just step out on faith with, um, I'm gonna talk about it more Saturday at tea with the trustees. And um, once I do that, um, then that's, I, I've already, like I have my business plan in order, I have um, my ideas on um, you know, who I'm going to talk to when it comes to sponsorship, now I'm gonna try and get sponsors. But I definitely do need vendors, so um, I will let you guys know. Uh, I'm home, I'll gotta let you guys know, basically, more details as details arise. But I thank y'all for joining in on my live, I truly appreciate it, I'll be back live tomorrow, like I say, for the Thornton Township meeting. Um, as I said, six o'clock, so it's a town hall meeting, so I'll talk to you guys then, you guys have a blessed night. Peace. Deuces.